I'll set, I got, well, here's Tom again. We lost him for a minute there. You're back.
Is Rich here?
No, he is not.
Anybody?
Okay, uh, so we, I, I will, um, see Justin for who's not here.
Rich, Rich.
Rich, yeah, I thought he was gonna be here. I spoke with him about something else earlier in the day. Let's just give it another moment if we could.
Okay.
What I did.
Here he is.
Okay. So we have a full house, correct?
We did. I believe Vera is here. Vera?
Is Vera there on by phone?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay. Three, seven, seven, zero, one, nine, two.
No, the other number.
No, yeah, Kathy, Kathy Dubay, one, five, four, Route six Columbia. I'd like three minutes under the audience.
Hi Kathy.
So I think Vera has the nine, four, nine.
Hi, Rick Nassif, thank you.
Night, flow nine, four, nine, me.
Oh, that's you? Okay. Oh, that's you. Vera's not on. Okay, so Vera's not here.
Okay, I'm gonna see, uh.
You gotta call the meeting.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I will see Justin for Vera. Uh, well, just that if we need to. Any, um, changes to the agenda, Paula?
None. No.
Okay. Uh, the minutes of March twenty second, I read through them, they look just fine. Any corrections? Anybody?
I do have a correction.
Okay.
At, at the top, it lists me as being present. I was not present.
Right.
You're sure of that?
I am sure.
Okay. So that probably should say member.
Probably should, probably should say member is not present.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes as corrected by Mr. Powell. Do I? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. I assume Bob, you're abstaining because you weren't here.
I will abstain.
Okay, no nays. Alright. Next up is the audience of citizens, Ms. Dubay.
Hi, good afternoon, can y'all hear me?
You just hit your, your, um, full name and your address for the record, if you could Kathy.
Kathy Dubay, D U B A Y, address of one, five, four, Route six Columbia.
I thank you for being here.
Thank you, thanks for inviting me in. A few concerns with regards to the blight issues that have been going on at one, four, nine and one, five, nine, Route six Columbia.
Kathy, Kathy, this is the wrong form for that, we're not an enforcement, we're the legislative agency and the administrative approval.
Can I, can I continue with my three minutes and get some guidance?
Okay.
Obviously, you can tell I'm at my wit's end. Many, many years, emails with Connie, there has been slight improvement. I'm concerned about the junk cars. And after doing some research on our state website with regards to the Department of Environmental Protection, it's been indicated to me that more than one unregistered vehicle, the property owner needs to have a junkyard license requirement from the Department of Motor Vehicles. And I don't think that happened, and I'm very concerned with, um, not in addition to the well waters, but also the hot river. So if I'm in the wrong meeting, um, Connie has my email and you all have my cell phone number. You could, after your meeting, maybe give me some guidance as to which proper meeting I should be in. I appreciate.
Yeah, let, let me just make a suggestion, you know, we're, this will get back to Connie through us also, and we appreciate you bringing it to our attention. And we do ask.
And this is Rick? Who's speaking? Is this Rick? Thank you.
This is Rick Nassif.
Thank you, go ahead.
Um, and so, um, and, and you know, to the extent that we'd like to be aware of where we are on enforcement issues in general, because it helps guide us with new regulations as we move forward. Um, it's important, though, what, what's working and what isn't. We were aware that there was a, a junk car problem there. I wasn't aware it was ongoing, I've never noticed it myself, quite frankly, even though it's probably apparent from the road. That said, that's Connie Kisslick, it's, it's her responsibility to enforce the zoning regulations. And, you know, the, you know, she's diligent as best as I understand. And if you don't feel she's diligent enough, I would, you know, reengage with her or speak with our town administrator, because technically.
She has been aware of this situation for over ten years. So I don't know where else to go.
Good question.
So this is why I'm here, and if I need to go to another meeting, I'd be happy to do that.
No.
And I appreciate some guidance. I'm very concerned about the land at this point. And the destruction of the property.
I'd like anyone on the commission to weigh in on this. I appreciate that you came to us when you didn't feel it was being, um, uh, taken care of at the town level. Uh, so that being said, that, I think the best that we can do is to contact Connie and ask her for an update as to the status and Paul.
That would be awesome.
Connie?
All I've been getting is the citations have been issued, the state marshal is serving, but I've been hearing that for so many years. So any further guidance would be appreciated.
Uh, Paula?
I will, I will, uh, meet with, with Connie, um, during the week.
Yeah.
The blight are, blight is an ordinance, um, and it's, it's difficult to enforce because there, people have property rights in this country. So there's a legal process, I don't know it, Connie is an expert at it. So there's a legal process and it is.
I, you know, I'm not looking to create an explanation for this right now, Paula, that isn't our purview. What I'm asking is that, could, uh, you engage Connie and ask her to give us an update on this?
Okay, will do.
This issue. And, and Kathy made suggestion, you know, tune into our next meeting. And we'll try and have.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll try and have an update on this. And the other, um, thing that, there's a blight ordinance, but there's also, um, a regulation against storing unregistered motor vehicles that exceed, um, one motor vehicle's worth of motor vehicle on a property. So it's a zoning regulation separate from.
From the street, you can see eight old cars in the yard.
I understand, I'm not, I'm trying not to get into the specifics of it, because that isn't what our purview is. We just want to engage with our zoning enforcement agent to, to get an update as to where this is at and why it hasn't been resolved.
And your next meeting will be, do you have that date now?
April twenty, or is it? April twenty.
That would be April twentieth.
Twenty six.
At seven PM, twenty-five, thank you.
Should it be two weeks?
Twenty six.
It should be the twenty-sixth.
It's two weeks from tonight.
Yeah, two weeks from tonight, April twenty-sixth at seven PM.
Thank you very much, everybody, I'll see you then.
Okay, good luck, thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate your time all, thank you for our beautiful town of Columbia, have a great night.
Good night.
Uh, Rick, just, just as, Rick, just as an aside, uh, we used to get periodic, uh, reports from the zoning enforcement officer.
We did.
I, I don't think we've gotten those in quite a long time.
Not in years.
Yeah, it used to be a standard thing that we would review, like every three months or every four months.
Yeah, just to get an idea whether or not our regulations were working.
Right.
You know, and, and that's the, so you know, for everyone here, and I, and I, I'll, I would say this to Kathy directly is, we're not an enforcement bureau. That's not what our function is, we're a planning and we're a zoning commission. And we do have a zoning enforcement agent, but I, I do like to know whether or not, there's something that we need to address in a different way if there's a problem. So I appreciate that she brought it to our attention.
My point was that it's a blight ordinance, which has nothing to do with PZC.
Uh, actually it does, because if you have, um, greater than one, one.
I'm not talking about the cars, I'm not, they're, they're going, what Connie is pursuing is it's under the blight ordinance.
So maybe she should pursue in parallel the, the automobile, the, uh, more than one bulk unregistered automobile.
She may be, yeah, she almost had this resolved about a year, year and a half ago. And he made just enough improvements with, and promises that, um, she held up on continuing it.
Okay, well, let's, let's get an update and let's not spend more time on evening, okay? Any questions from the commission on this or thoughts? Thank you, everybody. Okay, nothing under unfinished business, uh, nothing under new business, uh, regulation revision. So we talked about the subdivision regulation revisions, and I saw Paula that you gave us a very nice chart. And, uh, why don't we go through that? Is there anything you'd like to say? If you want to go right to that chart?
I'd like to go, and I like, the first item is the Columbia Lake Management, which we deferred discussion until, uh, tonight. We've got a public here, we have two public hearings on, on April twenty-sixth, two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
The, um, we've already posted, um, this language for the public hearing, so this is the language we're going forward, so we can't amend anything tonight. But it would be good to, um, just have a conversation before, so that, before the, um, hearing, just so that maybe you guys can, can figure out how you would like to address some of these. The item on, it's on page two, it's, uh, in the, in your handout there, I, I highlighted them in green, the two points. One is the issue of the, the first one inch flush of storm water being mandatorily treated with, um, a BMP, whether it's needed to be or not. And it's, I know Lake Management is not in favor of that, and it was added, um, I guess after the Lake Ad hoc Committee had recommended it. But that, um, I think, uh, Bob will talk, not Bob, what's his name, Dan O'Neil will talk about it, um, uh, at the public hearing. He feels it's not needed at all. Because the whole thrust of this, all these regulations is to treat the storm water in the most efficient, best way. Sometimes it is the first flush, first one inch flush, sometimes it isn't. So.
So there's just, there's a feeling by Lake Management, there isn't need to identify it as the, by the, by the first inch.
Correct, correct.
Bob, any thoughts on that?
I, I'm, I'm not on that subcommittee, Dan O'Neil, but, uh, as far as Lake Management's concerned, he's right, he, the, the general consensus is that we do, don't need that.
Okay, alright.
So that'll come up at the, the meeting next, in two weeks. And the other question is, um, it's on page three, towards the bottom, it's twenty-one, four, eight. Provision and procedures for reduction of li- lake watershed protection requirements. And it's, and I think it's appropriate to lay out, um, how somebody would go about, um, saying, you know, my property cannot possibly reduce to the, to the, to the level that you're requiring, or the table, the nutrient allocation worksheet requires. I understand that. What I don't understand is why it's PZC, I'm wondering if maybe it should be in the wetlands. And it, the regulations require a public hearing, and I don't understand why, because if the site doesn't, if the site can't handle, um, some stormwater, um, BMPs, for whatever reason. How, the public shouldn't be weighing in on that. It, somebody should be making a, an administrative.
That, that would be something I think we would want to, uh, we would weigh in on. The question may not be that the public weighs in on it as much as the public's aware of it.
Okay, alright. So maybe we notify the public, which is a different thing than, than a public hearing. Public hearing, it's, it gets into the state statutes of how you handle a public hearing. And I don't know if we've ever used this, we've not used it.
We, no, I believe we ever have, I'm not aware of it ever being done. And, and because it was a, a planning and zoning regulation, I think it, the administration of it was left to planning and zoning, but to be candid, I, I don't completely remember when we enacted this, I, I, this looks like news to me as I'm looking at it.
Yeah. Um, so.
Bob, you go back, Tom, anything? Nothing for me either.
Yeah, the, um, maybe consider changing the public hearing to, um, um, a butters being notified or something.
I, I'm thinking we leave it the way it is, it has never been used.
Okay, alright.
You know, I don't know that we need to address something like this. You know, the, the, the key here is the nutrient, um, allocation process works really well.
It does, it does.
I mean, really well, that, that's a provision, provision like this that has never been used, that's evidence of it. You know, we do have the provision, if somebody can demonstrate that they're not in the watershed, um, even if the watershed map indicates it, all they have to do is document that they're not in the watershed. And many times, you know, elevation changes of just a couple feet will change the, where water will flow on a property. We had that on, on Erdoney Road.
We've used that twice since I've been here, um, and it's a staff, staff thing, not PZC, I'm just looking at the topography.
Okay, anyone have any idea, any, any thought that we will likely want to pursue this? I don't think so.
Okay, so we won't, we won't even bring it up next week.
Okay.
The, uh, the document that went out, the two, the areas that I had greened in were with, I pulled those out of what was handed out for the public and is on the public website, so that's, or the website for the public. Um, so that's, that was just for our discussion.
And let me know if anyone wants me to put any of these documents on the screen. Um, probably don't, it's pretty straightforward. So next up, I think we get into page five, the, um, memorandum about subdivision regulations.
Yes, um, I met with, uh, Mike Lester, who's our fire marshal, and he's also, I don't know if he's currently a fireman, uh, but he has been in the past and he may still be. Okay, he is. Um, and he's, he's, um, as a fire marshal, he receives a stipend from, from the town. Uh, because I know you guys were concerned about, um, bothering volunteers. But he's a hired person, he's on the payroll. So, um, he's gonna, going, he agreed that, you know, that, that, the, uh, he was not comfortable with having an unlimited length of, um, cul-de-sac, but he's also, you know, he's gonna talk to, um, the fire chief. Not as a formal meeting, but just to, to talk to the fire chief about it. And see if, you know, what, what they think the length of a dead end street, or the number and/or the number of houses on a dead end street. And if, if it's, is, uh, the width, it's an extra wide street to the, could it then be longer? So they're gonna talk about that. And we also talked, Mike and Al, I also talked about the, uh, the cistern requirement for three or more new lots. And we were bouncing around some different ideas to accomplish the water supply needs townwide. Where maybe, I think it was Rich, I think it was you came up with an idea a couple of weeks ago about having, uh, maybe a map that this is, you know, zone B is where we really need water because we're not near Columbia Lake or Mono Pond or a cistern. Um, so thinking about some way of doing that perhaps. And he will, he, Mike will talk to the fire chief, uh, about that as well. Um, but maybe figure out a way of doing that, and I don't know if we could, and I'll have to check with the town attorney, but I, making it mandatory that a cistern go in for X number of new lots. Or if it's not in zone B or zone critical A or whatever it is, um, then it would be a, they'd pay into a fund to the town. And then the town would, would put something in, in whatever part of town we needed extra water.
But in your conversations, um, every town gets rated and every fire department gets rated by how many minutes it takes to get X number of gallons to fires. So they already have some pretty good ideas on where their, their weak points are, and that's something that maybe as a town, it should be looked at for putting it in. Versus putting the mandatory on everybody, then you get overkill.
Yeah, I mean, one other example is I said, oh, what if, you know, we just put in a cistern, we've got, since I've been here, three cisterns have gone in. Well, if there's a little new three lot subdivision next door to one of those, do we really need another cistern right there? Um, and, and Mike said, no, you really don't. So it's, let's figure out a way, so they'll come up with something.
Yeah, they know how many minutes it takes, and the insurance regulations also set that up, which sets a lot of our insurance policies up for our homeowners is based on that.
Yeah.
Anchor shuttle.
Yep.
So maybe the, some of the most useful input we could get from the fire marshal is, um, how far can they pump water?
A mile. Easily a mile.
If that's the case, and that's, that's considered an efficient approach to water supply.
It takes a while.
One second, in, in a water supply, in a, in a firefighting situation, and there, there's a water supply, maybe that's, its proximity to another water supply is.
You want it, you want to stay away from a mile pumping, because now, once you drop that hose, now any road, anything you go by, nobody can drive over that. So you can lock yourself in, so, I mean, they know what they need, you, I would just talk with them and, you know, see what, what they say for locations.
Okay.
They map, they map it out and, and drill.
So let me, let me go back to the core question here. I think this question has come up about cul-de-sac length, the number of lots. Uh, and, and I don't want to put words in anyone, anyone's mouth, but there might be a feeling that it's reasonable to cons- consider expanding what we currently allow.
That was gonna be my question, Rick, I mean, why are we, why are we reviewing this? Has there been specific requests to change the length of cul-de-sac?
There's been constant nudging over the years, um, and not so much just from developers, people that have land at the end of a cul-de-sac, what's our limit now, thirteen is it?
I don't remember.
It seems like, that, it seems like that number was low. You know, as, as we, we require these wide open shelves, and we've had newer subdivisions with that, uh, that are not on streets that are tree lined, or at least not when the subdivision's created, you know, take, uh, Columbia Landing, Homestead Lane, Hunter's Ridge, Sunrise Drive. If, you know, there probably is more room to support more subdivisions there, and these are premium price subdivisions because it's so darn expensive to build a road into these. I mean, the, the net reality is the chance that we're gonna see a subdivision with a road built in it, in the near to middle term, term, is about zero. You know, with road at four hundred dollars a linear foot to put in, and us requiring for the most part two hundred feet of frontage, it's forty thousand dollars per lot just to put the road in.
Well, if, if we don't think there's gonna be any development, then why are we spending time reviewing this, this, uh, subdivision regulation?
Because we've had requests in the past to go past what our current number was. And it's, it's a lull time.
You're saying the economics don't make sense, then, then it's not gonna, is there, is there better use of our time, I guess is what I'm saying.
I don't think this is gonna take a lot of time, it's, I think, you know, I don't have a strong feeling that we need to approach it now. But now is the time to approach it, because if we wait till we get, um, till there's pressure, you know, I think we do have the time. This is one of those long-term things that came up on our, our regulation, uh, list of, of things that we want to address. We're having time, we're not, we, we're not reviewing subdivisions.
Well, but my point, my point is I can see reviewing cistern regulation, because I know in recent, in recent years, we've had questions about that. But I can't remember having somebody question the length of a road or the number of lots on a, on a cul-de-sac, and if they do, as we've asked other developers to do, bring in a recommended change to our regulations, and we will consider that. Let them do the homework.
Feel we need to consider this now? You don't feel we need to?
We just recently had a, uh, we had to reject a request to develop a lot because it, uh, it exceeded our existing regulations, so.
Yeah, and, and that's fine, if the person feels very strongly about it, let them present a case with a new regulation. Um, and we'll consider it, this is what we always tell the developers.
Say one point.
Yeah, Rich?
Are there many cul-de-sacs now that could be modified to meet any new, uh, requests? I mean, could there be any, there are?
Oh, yes. Tommy, you need to unmute yourself, which is why nobody's hearing you.
Because that would be, uh, if, if we aren't getting a lot, that would be a reason we could, uh, would have to look at it.
I mean, one of the things that, that, uh, we're in the process of, uh, reviewing, um, we're going down our list of, uh, topics for revisions. And, uh, subdivisions is next up on the list. Um, so I've been working, you weren't around the last couple of times, last few meetings, Bob, when we, we kicked this off. But, um, so we've, we've started the revisions on the, on the subdivisions, and this is, um, a couple of the things that, that, um, have come up over the, it's on our, specifically on our list to look at. Um, and the other thing is, um, we currently have the distinction between a temporary cul-de-sac and a permanent cul-de-sac. And that's, uh, we've gotten hurt in the past, I think, with the, the temporary cul-de-sacs that just keep growing and growing and growing, or not growing. They're temporary, like Heritage Road, it's, it was temporary. So that the town, they, they met our reg, so they, they put in, what is it, sixty houses along in there? Um, and it's a, it's a dead end cul-de-sac at this point.
Can I add something when, yet, now that I'm unmuted and didn't know it? I think it'd be better to establish the, the figures now, how, how, the maximum on the, uh, length and the frontage and the number of lots, just so we have a benchmark.
I, I have, Rich, Rich, yeah.
I, I, I agree, because if somebody wants to add one house to a, a, a cul-de-sac that could handle it, you could add months to their time before they can even start anything, you know.
You know, I, I think it's, I have the same perspective, Bob, I, I respect your, 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 um, feelings on this. I think the overwhelming consensus of the commission was it was reasonable to review this at this time, so let's, let's just keep this on the agenda. Uh, we'll have a debate about it, if anyone feels strongly that we don't need to do it, then, then that's what the process is about, but, well, we're collecting more data now. Um, so Paula, you were going to, um, and, you know, one of the things that has to go is the, the temporary cul-de-sac definition. You know, it just, it's, it made a lot of things ugly in our process over the, the years. It's just really doesn't work, we, and, and coming up with a revision there is, is in order.
Agreed. The, uh, our current definition of a cul-de-sac is just talking, is just defining it, which is what a definition is, but it's defining it as a road that ends in a loop. And it's, we were talking before about, we should, probably should be calling these dead end streets and not cul-de-sacs, um, in the future.
No point access?
One of, I, I ran into, when I was doing this, pulling this information for the table, I ran into a definition, and I don't know which town it was. But they call it a cul-de-sac, it's a street or combination or pattern of streets, having only one outlet to a through state or town road.
That's good.
I thought that was.
Island Woods, right?
That's Island Woods, yeah.
The other thing, oh, that's Wellwood Road.
The other thing I, thing I think we could add is the width of the road as a fact when there's two.
Yep, so the, not, not every town, um, on, back into my table a little bit, not every town specified the maximum lots. I couldn't find it anywhere, and it wasn't in a logical place in their subdivision regulations. Glastonbury, Hebron and Killingley. So what I did is I looked to see what they're looking, what their minimum frontage was. And figuring, like in Glastonbury, their frontage is 200 feet. So if it's a 1,500 foot road, you can get, you know, opt-in. 200 feet. Up the road and then maybe three more lots at the, at the top of the cul-de-sac. Maybe rear lots. So the the estimated possible lots, just so that we have something to look at in terms of what does it mean for a 2,000 foot? Uh, street in Hebron. It's about 23 houses.
Okay, you know, okay, that'll come up. More info is better. Anything else on the subdivision regs right now?
The only other thing we, I don't think we talked, we brought it up, but we didn't talk about it. At least I don't recall us talking, you guys talking about it. This is the last item on that page that's, should the fee and lieu be required? To be paid at the time the subdivision is filed with the town clerk, which is when it's becomes a legal subdivision. Or should it, should we be putting a lien on on each lot that they would then pay at the the time of the closing?
Think we need to collect the fee when when the the subdivision is approved and be done with it. This has just been a. I can't say what I'm thinking. This has been a less than optimal situation for the town. Trying to collect money, you know, we're, the town is trying to collect, we we're still trying to collect money at Hunter's Ridge, correct?
Correct, most of the.
Have been sold for some time.
I think we've collected four up for.
Okay, so yet, I I I think. I I don't like taxing developers, but I think as long as we're going to tax them, let's collect it when we, when we, we give them the benefit.
When, when the property is sold, who's, who pays the fee?
The seller of the property.
Seller or the buyer?
Seller.
Dealer.
It's factored into the price.
Yeah, so I think I agree with you, Rick. I think you collect from the developer upfront.
Upfront.
Cost, the cost of doing business.
You know, I, like I said, I don't like layering on, I, so this will go, we can, we'll discuss this at length when we're in, you know, the public hearing and and in the discussion mode after, but. I feel strongly that it would be better if we just collect it and be done with it. I don't want to have to put liens on. I don't want to have to have liens. Taken off. I don't want town staff to have to spend time and effort administering whether or not they've collected the money. Except that one time, just after we've approved the the subdivision. Rich, what were you going to say?
I was curious, do they have to pull a permit for each individual house when they do a subdivision? You can always tag it onto that or they can't start the house.
Actually, the problem is they can sell the lot. And they, there's no control for paying this fee when the developer sells the lot. So the lot, lot can, can go unpaid, the fee can go unpaid on the lot.
You'd have to lean the property in order to do that.
And it should be the developer that's paying, not, not the purchaser.
You know, just like meeting, it's, it's a, it's a requirement of the subdivision, so to let it.
By approving the subdivision, Rick, you're adding value to the property. So that the developer has has improved the value of the property because it is an approved subdivision. He therefore should be able to pay the fee.
Agreed. Okay, so anyone not agree with this concept? We don't have to debate it. Okay.
Unfortunately, I think the only way you should can handle it.
Yep, uh, I don't think we have anything else tonight except to get through the the agenda. Uh, so no, any communications and reports, Paula?
I have a few things. We. Received a four, four lot subdivision across the counter today, so officially, you're receiving it tonight. Uh, by statute, the, it's on Hop River, it's four lots on Hop River. I'll work through the application, it, because it's Borders Columbia, I need to notify. Uh, Borders, Borders Coventry.
And there, Paula?
It's the, the, it's a Hop River LLC, is the name of the applicant. Wes Watworth is, is the agent. It's the family that's that owns that house that's there. It's on the south side of Hop River. I thought that was mine because I forgot to turn.
That was Linda calling me. Linda McDonald.
So. My guess is, my guess is that the public hearing for for that will be the last meeting in May or early June. Uh, because of the notifications that we have to do because of the abutting town. I received a draft from.
Oh, that's, is that, that the property with all the falling down structures on it? Okay.
And empty land.
Yeah, that's owned by the Julianos.
They sold the house, they sold the house, they did a free split, they sold the house and. About five acres around the house and then kept the rest of it as, as for a future subdivision. They've been marketing it as if, not they, but the agent has been marketing it as if it was a subdivision for about two years now. Um, and funny, they've not been able to sell any of them. I also received a draft of the event wedding venue. Concept from a draft of the. Zoning regulation for the event slash wedding venue from the Gates Business. Not sure it. I think you're going to want to add some more layers to it, but I I did a little bit, I. I asked Greg to take a look at Greg Glode. To take a look at our. Uh, wedding venue, farm winery events. So some of the things I think could be incorporated in there. And that one also, we need to notify, because it would be. All our residential district, we need to notify all five surrounding towns in three cogs. So that one will take a little bit of a process, but I sent them the application for that. The other issue is, it's. It will be resolved, but the, the current governor's executive order allowing us to meet like this expires next week. Or excuse me, later this week. Expires on the 19th of April. The legislature is working on replacing. The language with. Actually Connecticut statute versus an executive order. They probably won't have it done in time, so. The odds are, the governor will extend the April 19th deadline to May 19th so that. Meetings can still happen. We have an extra member tonight.
Very cute.
You probably didn't hear.
Looks like a dinosaur.
It's a fat orange cat from Fat Orange Cat Brewery.
Okay.
You might have missed it, but my dog was chewing on her squeaky toy through part of the meeting. So I'm done. Communicating.
Anything else, anything else anyone would like to bring up?
Nope, good.
Yeah, Rick.
Tom who?
Now, I know this, I know this, you know, you said this isn't our purview, but I've been thinking about it since Kathy spoke. You know, taking my planning and zoning hat off and just thinking as a private citizen. You know, I think that, you know, people in town can get very frustrated, you know, we have these, you know, regulations and then we have. You know, Connie, who I think does a good job in terms of the, you know, staying on top of it and and issuing, you know. The necessary paperwork, but but where do you go as a private citizen when you can't get satisfaction? And whose responsibility is that? If we pass the regulations. I don't know, just a thought.
No, you asked a question, but I I would, I'd love to to give a perspective and I'd love everyone, anyone else's perspective. So we have a town employee, our, our zoning enforcement officer, who's charged with. Enforcing the zoning regulations. If she's doing it.
Beat him over the head? I mean, really?
No, no, no. If, so if she's doing it, then she's doing her job. If somebody feels she isn't doing her job, the path of recourse is to go to our town administrator and say, look, I voiced a valid. Uh, complaint to the enforcement agent and I don't, I haven't been getting the action I think I should have gotten. And then, but that's hopefully, you know, after they've attempted to engage Connie at least more than once or twice. To find out what the explanation is. I've found her to be consistent in following up and being methodical, but. If somebody is is consistently. Flaunting the regulations. Then I, from there, I would either become a political issue, going from the town administrator to our. Our, our first selectman or or the town administrator coming to us saying, you know, we have a problem. Conversely, if Connie makes a ruling that they don't agree with by statute, they can appeal her ruling to the zoning board of appeals.
So I guess my question then is, are Mark and Steve aware? That they, you know, somebody can hold, you know, it can go to them on this, have they ever been confronted with that type of an issue?
I don't know firsthand, but I I would nearly bet everything that, yes, Mark has been contacted if somebody.
Paul, can you weigh in on this at all? Do you know any?
I do. Um, this, this is, it's, I think his first name is John, John Newmac. His property that's driving towards Hartford, it's on the right hand side, down, down in the Dell a little bit in the woods. With lots of. Junk around and it's, it, yes, there are the cars there, but it's, it's been a blight. It's has fallen under the blight ordinance and I'll talk to Connie about the cars. But I know they've, it, it, the complaint has been as as blight. So that's under the ordinances that's established by the town and that's under the town administrator and the, and the first selectman. In this country, number one is people have a right to their property. Number, so if if some, if you're accusing somebody of not meeting some regulation or an ordinance. You have to notify them, then you wait 30 days, then the sheriff goes out and files something and you wait another 30 days or 60 days. And then you have to take them to court. And it's, we almost had one of the snags with this one. They had not paid their property taxes. So if it was foreclosed on, or I think they had, it had been foreclosed on. But then they paid, and you have six months to pay your taxes and they paid the taxes at the last moment. So the town thought that we, the town thought that they were going to own the property. So it's. It's, it's tough. He's an older fellow, he's, I don't think his health is all that well. Part time, he's living there. It gets better and then it, it, it got better about a year and a half ago. Connie worked with him. He doesn't want anybody on his property. We've been trying to get the town administrator and Steven. First selectman, Steven Everett, has been working, tried to to get him to agree to let, you know, boy scout troops to come. And we'll get dumps, you know, get dumpsters there and they'll fill the dumpsters and, and he doesn't want anybody in his property. So it's not easy, it's not easy and.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't think it is and, and and I'm really not just talking about this specific case. It's just, my thought process was. We seem to be able, unable to go much further than Connie's then issuing, you know, a citation.
Well, then it goes to court and then it goes to court if that's not responded to.
Remember, remember what happened, this was not a, a town ordinance being enforced, it was a zoning regulation. That was violated, the Art Ogden debacle, where, you know, we assessed him $22,000 in fines. And we spent $50,000 to collect that in legal fees and then the judge. Threw out our fine structure and only awarded us $5,000.
Right, right. I understand. I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not thinking it's easy, I'm just, I'm just, the frustration. Not just of our, you know, planning and zoning, but the frustration of a private citizen who has to. Either live next to this or drive by it every day. I don't, I, it just doesn't seem like we have enough meat to to enforce this type of.
Well, we don't have, because we only have a certain statutory power. And the, the real, you know, issue there and it's, and it sucks is if somebody. Wanted to, they could file a civil suit against somebody for. Taking value away from their property. That's no, that's no good solution because they'll never recover that money. People have to spend a lot of money in America to enforce their rights.
That goes both ways, you know?
I was just gonna say that, goes both ways. You gotta be careful.
Got it. Just, just commenting, that's.
I just, you know, I've tried zealously to keep us out of the enforcement business, though. What our defined function is.
But the other side of, the other side of the coin. Rick, the other side of the coin is, as a private citizen, where do you turn? You know, I can see why she's coming to us.
You know, you know, I I recently had a problem with Eversource had a telephone, utility pole falling over at my driveway. And they wouldn't come out and fix it. And I raised, I raised all kinds of ruckus, calling. Our town administrator, I threatened to call the state police for endangering the welfare of the public. Once I threaten them enough, they, they actually came out.
No, just, just, just a comment, just running around my head.
No, no, I appreciate the thought and I, I have this similar frustration, you know. This has been an ongoing issue and why, why it's gone on this long. I think it's time.
One question I have for, are they keeping the neighbor posted on everything they've done? It didn't sound like she's. She's been in contact, you know, other than.
I don't, I'm not, she does not live, she's a nearby neighbor, she's not an abutting neighbor.
She's not a budding, no.
But.
She has to drive by it every day.
But certainly if somebody's making a complaint to the town, it would be nice if that person was made aware of the action that the town is taking.
Right, I agree.
Owner or somebody that's.
Maybe the, the more simple question, instead of mandating that kind of thing is. If they make a telephone call to the zoning enforcement agent asking for the status of the enforcement action, do they get a timely callback? Right, that's, that's as simple as that. You know, when you want something in this life, you have to follow up on it.
Yeah, because if you make, if you make her aware of how tied everybody's hands are. She may be a little, make her feel a little better that everything's being done, that's could be being done, you know? So she doesn't get desperate.
You know, I, I, I don't want to, as a group, to us mandate that, you know, a certain type of response to somebody file a complaint. But it's, it's basic business, it's basic, the way we operate. If you, if you have a concern and you express it to a member of our town. You know, you, you're not getting an answering machine, you're getting a person, or if you do, you get a call back. I mean, I've.
The, the, the only thought I would add to, 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 add for, is that maybe when you're talking to Connie to. Make sure there's people, if people call that she does get back, you know, it's.
I, I know she does and it's, this, this has been going on for so long and I, I, I hear Kathy's frustration. Yeah, but it's, you know, Connie's hands are tied and a lot of people just don't want. You know, I think it's human nature to assume that, well, your hands aren't really tied, you're just not doing it right.
You know, we have, we have a bulk regulation, if it's being violated, she could start to, I would think she could start to find. For non-compliance with the zoning regulation.
Well, she's finding with the, with the blight, the blight ordinance has hefty fines as well.
I just, but I just, I, I.
Yeah, I, I will bring that up. I will bring that up to her.
I just referred to a zoning.
It just, it just doesn't seem to be allowed to teeth, even, even the finding is, as you pointed out earlier, Rick. It, it, it doesn't seem like it solves the issue.
And, you know, but it may be a hook that allows, uh, a cease and desist order to be put in effect.
Yeah, I didn't wanna belabor, I just, you know, I just.
When it gets to a point where, where the town can foreclose because of the, the size of the fees. Um, I will say that, uh, Connie, um, is excellent at resolving. Issues as long as the resident is reasonable.
Right.
Um, this, there's been two of them. Um, I mean. Mashad, she solved the problem with Mashad, she and Martha.
It's gorgeous now, isn't it?
Well, it's lovely, but it's no longer a sign. Um, but it's.
It's a sign, it's still a sign with things bolted to the building. It's still a sign. Because you're selling those items, those are a form of advertisement, even though it's not an official sign, it is a sign.
It's.
Yep, I don't want, I wanna be doing this during our planning and zoning meetings. We're going way farther into this.
Sorry.
But I will, um, Connie has done, um, uh. The, whenever she has an enforcement issue. And, uh, or whether it's, um, blight or zoning, she really works with a person and it takes time. Takes a lot of negotiation. You, you're not trying to anger somebody, you're trying to resolve it. Um, and it, she's excellent at that.
There's.
But as Bob pointed out earlier, I do think we need more updates on what's going on.
Yep, it's, it's gonna be a little while. We're, one of Connie's primary job is, um. Issuing zoning permits. We have, I think, open right now, uh, open meaning. She needs to, uh, review and put conditions on. I think it's five new houses. And we've got five, five or six others that are under construction right now. It's. I, our heads are spinning. Last summer it was, um, everybody was putting in pools, it was smaller things last summer with COVID. Everybody was putting in pools and, and putting in a patio and putting up a pavilion and that kind of stuff. Um, new kitchens. This year it's like, we're just building a new house. It's been, it's amazing. It's amazing. Every one of Fairview Farms subdivision. On sixty-six has sold, every lot has sold.
Yep.
Hey, remember when he was doing that? We didn't think they'd sell for years.
I didn't, I didn't either, especially the prices he was asking, but.
They're going.
Gone, they've gone.
Yeah.
Every one of them, every one of them sold. So.
Anyway.
I will talk to Connie and I will get back to you guys, uh, in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I have, I have one more thing I'd like to mention, if I may.
Where, where'd you come from?
I've been here the whole time.
I'm a Wendy's in there.
What is it?
Yeah, I was just, I was just a little, um. I guess surprised is the word. Um, of the. Spraying by the Terminex company up to Rec Park. Does anybody know anything about that?
I don't.
Nope.
I was concerned from, I was just concerned from an environmental standpoint.
Yeah, I would check with Mark Walter.
Yeah, I was gonna send him an email. Okay. I just did, I figured I'd ask and we were talking about other stuff, that's all.
Hey, I have a motion on the table. Did I get a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I think Larry was the first up. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night.